Okay, let's call the meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Nicole Fickers, here.
Zach Rudin, here.
Bruce Law, here.
Robert Chowers, here.
John Andrews, here.
White Washington, here.
Next up is the agenda. Is there any additions? Can you speak this morning? Additions, deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add a consideration of a FOIA appeal. It can either be addressed as part of my administrator's report, or you can add it as a separate item, but it will need action by the board commissioners. So, whatever your...
Do it on your report.
Okay, that's fine with me, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have an addition.
Okay, sir.
I would move to amend the agenda to improve approval of the three-year Lansing Economic Area Partnership contract renewal.
Support that. We're gonna add that item. Let's do it right before the Health Department update.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have those materials included for you this morning, so we will get those before your consideration. So, Todd, if you could...
We're gonna move it down, then. We're gonna go for right prior committee reports. Did I give you enough time?
Yes.
Did you say right before?
Right before committee reports.
Okay.
Any other additions, deletions? Entertain a motion to approve as amended?
So do, so do.
Support.
The motion is supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next up is a presentation of the minutes from October 28th Board of Commissioners meeting. It's a pleasure of the Board.
Move to accept the meeting, meeting been assessed, presented, Mr. Chair. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next up is Communications. We have Grand Travers County Resolution opposing the MDHHS competitive procurement process. Leland County is the same. I'm gonna hit on this one, Notice of Public Meeting, Proposed Solar Energy Facility Project in Bingham Township. If everybody's seen that, they set a public meeting date. Should be in your packet. We have an email from Saginaw Bay and River BOC Pat Liaison, Sarah Trumbull. Email from Teresa Lynn, supporting prohibition of NDAs in the LEAP updated agreement. It's a pleasure of the Board.
Move to receive and place on file, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Support.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get to the FOIA appeal, I just mentioned, included in your yellow folders is an invitation from Jesse Stipzak. Apologize if I didn't get the last name correctly. For some upcoming dates to the Catalyst Business Membership Meetings, requesting an RSVP. I believe Penny sent that to you by email as well, but I just want to point that out to your attention. I believe the RSVP deadline that was requested is today. So, just make sure everyone has seen that. Also included in your yellow folder is an appeal of a FOIA denial received yesterday under the statute. It's considered received by the Board of Commissioners today, and they have 10 days to issue a response, so it needs to be addressed this morning. Request was made for specific records from the Sheriff's Office for a specific timeframe or time period, August 1st through September 1st, 2025. There were no records that were identified by the Sheriff's Office. However, the requestor appealed that and referenced several other incidents that had occurred outside of that timeframe. Obviously, they were not part of the original FOIA response, so thus the denial for records. The appeal communication was also, and it's referenced in the response letter, is being treated as an additional FOIA request for which search and response will be made for those other potential records that may occur. So, this one is fairly simple. The time, there was nothing that occurred during the timeframe, so there are no records. Entertain any questions? And, Mr. Chairman, you did advise me that there was a typographical error in the appeal on page, on the second page, reference a date. The date reference in the draft that you received was December 24th, 2025. Obviously, that has not occurred. We've verified that it should, it has been corrected for the official response. It will be, it was December 15th, 2024. And I will happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions on this floor?
Question. So, there's no record of any traffic violations because there weren't any?
There weren't any that occurred during the specific timeframe that the request referenced. It was a month, a one-month period, August 1st through September 1st, and there, and there were no records for traffic violations during that timeframe.
Thank you. Any other questions? You need action by the Board?
Yes, sir.
Entertain a motion to deny the FOIA request because the information is not there between those dates.
That is correct.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Anything else?
Nothing for me, sir.
Next up, we'll have a public comment. When you reach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, please. Does anybody like to address the Board?
Good morning, Board. Kurt Wolf, 1700 North Shepherdsville Road. I'm here just representing the Clinton Conservation District as their executive director. I just noticed on the Ways and Means Committee meeting the other day that there was some discussion for a master plan for the 4-H fairgrounds. I'd just like you to consider the Conservation District to help support in some of those decisions. Not necessarily seat on the Board. We're pretty integral in starting the St. John's FFA chapter. We got all the training materials for Samantha Bougie, who is the AG teacher there for St. John's. We purchased all the classroom materials, and we work hand-in-hand with Harmer's here in Clinton County. So, please consider us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to address the Board?
Donna Graham, Green Bush Township. Good morning, and happy Thanksgiving this week. I'd like to respond to a Commissioner's comments from the November 19th Ways and Means Committee meeting regarding replacement of the planning commission positions. This Commissioner stated that, quote, "There were too many people on there that are not objective in their thinking and need to be replaced from southern tier who don't use planning and zoning services to have a balance." He further stated that, quote, "It's according to the state constitution," end quote. "I've done some homework, and I believe the Commissioner's comments are out of line, misguided, and lack of merit. The PC represents a cross-section of business, agriculture, education, and local government officials, is highly recommended in state statutes, who have worked to the best of their abilities to address the challenges of zoning planning in our county. A statement in the county website states, quote, "The Planning and Zoning Department is responsible for implementing land use and development policies, as well as enforcing land use and zoning ordinances for 10 of the general law townships within Clinton County," end quote. "The six independent zone townships don't want outsiders in their business, and likewise, I don't think we need input into our business. Under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, the state constitution is never mentioned, as the Commissioner alludes. PC bylaws, as amended in 2023, are silent as to staffing composition, however, they do reference the seven members appointed by the BOC in accordance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Section 125.3815 of the Act addresses membership qualifications under subsections, such as representation from important segments of the community, qualified electors, one BOC member, and ex-official members but are not mandated." An AI inquiry that somebody initiated asked if Michigan statute requires PC membership outside the jurisdiction of the 10 general law townships. In summary, Article 7 of the Michigan Constitution covers county township structures, but no provisions for planning and rezoning boards and commissions. There's only a short reference to Board of Commissioners only. There is no requirement for membership from independent zone townships. Therefore, since there are no mandates, as the Commissioner suggests, I'm asking you consider replacements from the 10 general law townships as they represent our unique planning and zoning situation. The BOC represents all districts, and in the end, you have final vote on issues and would represent the balance the Commissioner speaks to us. Lastly, I support Teresa's letter requesting language on the LEAP agreement prohibiting NDAs for transparency in our county. Thank you.
Perfect timing, Donna.
I practiced it many times.
You hit it on the dot.
Jim Wallace, Steel Road, Bingham Township. As many of you are aware, RWE has asked for a public meeting at the Bingham Township Hall here in December, I think December 17th. They are, it looks like they are pursuing their interest in the solar array out there on Walker Road. I just bring this to your attention. I hope our state legislators can get an invitation to attend this meeting. I would hope that they would step forward and face the public that they represent. We know how this ends. Solar, just as the EV market is falling apart here in Lansing, hundreds of millions of dollars have pumped into a plant with three production lines. They're barely able to produce on one line. Two lines in that production plant set idle. Up in Macosta, the Goshen plant, Green Township people stood tall and took a very big financial hit to their public coffers there. They fought Goshen and the governor, the state, and they held true to their beliefs. They put their money where their mouth is. They stood tall. I think they would say that money was well spent. I hope we're willing to do the same because we know how this ends. It'll end terribly. You can do a quick Google search, RWE just this year filed bankruptcy in Texas on two different projects. 2023, here in the state of Michigan, they filed bankruptcy on $137 million on a hydro dam up in the UP and O train. When the going gets tough, our RWE gets walking. They're not afraid to cut and run. The solar market is not on the rise. It's in a holding pattern. Alpha Source is a group that measures these companies. They have RWE rated 49 out of 100. Not even quite 50/50 chance is what their Alpha Source is saying about RWE. They're not even a 50/50 chance on them. The stock market has them in a hold, meaning, don't bet on them. Let's wait and see what happens. Are we willing to wait and see what happens? Or can we push them back and just go a little bit north to Grashop? Tell me what they're gonna do with all their waste in 20 years. The time it takes to raise a child, they're gonna have a mess on their hands. And what are they gonna wanna do? They're probably gonna wanna pull, bring all their waste down to our landfills and store it in our landfills. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Scott Kennesnick, 4334 North Okusta Road, Fowler, Michigan. Just wanted to bring up a couple of items this morning. First, thank you very much to the Board for sponsoring our Career Expo for Clinton County RISA. It's something you've done every year. And on November 6th in DeWitt, we brought in 800 eighth graders and 800 10th graders for them to experience over 150 action booths, we called them. Those were employers, branches of the military, colleges, and universities, and it was just a great day for kids to get a chance to experience what types of careers and options there are there out for them. I've always said you can't beat it if you can't see it, and this was a day where kids could actually see different jobs, careers, and opportunities for them in their future. So, thank you for sponsoring that again this year. The second thing I wanted to talk about was the importance of Clinton County Catalyst. I serve on that Board and have for the past three years, and my role is the superintendent of RISA. And just wanted to point out the importance of having a local economic development entity in our county. For me at Clinton RISA, it's the connections that I've been able to make with Clinton County Catalyst. And a couple of examples. Had a call from their executive director last fall that M-Tech, which is a business just west of here, had an interest in connecting with our auto program to get a chance to meet some of our kids as they were looking for employees. And you fast forward to the last spring, we had something called Signing Day, where we had students who signed offers to go right to work out of high school or enlisted in the military. We brought the employers and the recruiters in, and we celebrated the kids. And lo and behold, the representative from M-Tech was there, and they actually hired one of our kids full-time right out of our program. So, that's one example of a connection. Another example is Versiti is a member of Clinton County Catalyst, and they are an organization that collects blood. And so, the connection there was to our nursing students. We've had three blood drives this year, which involve our kids. Our kids actually get to, but they don't draw the blood, but they get to be involved. And we've generated 53 units of blood, and they say that those units, one unit saves about three lives, so that's 159 lives saved. And if you know about Versiti, most of the product stays within our region, and so that's just another connection. And then finally, Catalyst was present at the Career Expo as well as one of our action booths, talking about the importance of economic development here in Clinton County. So, I certainly understand the importance of regionalization. I'm involved in lots of regional opportunities, but I think it's just as vitally important to have some kind of a boots-on-the-ground local economic development entity. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Good morning. Craig Bishop, 615 South Morton Street, St. John's, Michigan. I'm gonna just build on top of what Scott had to say. I'm currently the Board Chair for the Clinton County Catalyst, and I've been associated with this entity since probably its earliest days in the early 2000s when John Sernicki was our first president. During the COVID years, Drew Mitchell was our president. We were a pretty quiet group. She retired during that timeframe, and the Board took a real hard look at where we were at that time. Do we fold our tables? Do we just call it a day? Will we move on? But we were encouraged by, at that time, we had 25 investors who were still with us, and they asked us to keep the doors open, to keep on grinding through. So, in 2023, we hired Tim Fair, who took bold leadership steps to transform who we are, who we were, and where we are today, which always seems to beg the question, who are we, and what do we do? The Clinton County Catalyst works with strategic connections, collaborative efforts, and purposeful investments to build a stronger, more vibrant Clinton County. How have we attempted to do this? To start with, we have started with business roundtables that have covered the Corporate Transparency Act, Earn Sick Time Act. We've had roundtables with state legislators and federal legislators, conflict resolution in the workplace, strategic planning, and artificial intelligence, to name a few of the topics we've talked about during the past year or two. General sessions have included real estate updates from Sean and Julia O'Brien of Colliers Lansing, and Kelly Preston of Capital Steel &amp; Wire has shared with us her journey as a woman-owned business in a male-owned industry. We established a 501(c)(3), known as Thrive. Thrive has applied for and awarded over $200,000 in grant money, some of them going into Bath Township for housing development. We have put over, put the Clinton County Arts Council over the top to build their storage shed behind the art shell. We have obtained funds from ITC and consumers that provided assistance to the Believers Food Pantry during the recent shutdown that impacted those who needed SNAP benefits. We financially supported the St. John's Chamber for the Mint Festival's 40th anniversary. We assisted Ballenger Meats in opening a shop in downtown DeWitt. We've established and maintained partnerships with Small Business Administration of Michigan and RISA prior to their Career Expo. We are currently working with a large manufacturing facility which desires to move into Clinton County, using private equity funds with an opportunity to deploy up to 400 people in this county. We are working with Eagle Township on a PFAS problem. Those are just to name a few things that we've done. So, today, we have approximately 125 investors as compared to the 25 we had two years ago. And I would be remiss to say we'd love to add Clinton County back to that list again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to address the Board?
My name is Michael Bryant. I live in Ovid, have for 52 years. I own the business in DuPlaine Township. I was veterinarian for 44 years. I was asked to serve on the Clinton County Planning Commission five years ago, mainly to represent education, which is interesting, Scott's here, because I was on the RISA Board then. And that's why I was asked to be on the commission, was that sector. What I really want to discuss is the resolution that was passed last month. It pretty much chastised me as a planning commission member for not recommending passage of a zoning change at a four-acre parcel in DuPlaine Township. Now, of course, that was gonna, anyway. I was, of course, after voting that way, as you know, we were summoned. I was summoned to the office to be interrogated by four people and for my rezoning, of not supporting the rezoning. My question to you all is, because it was made very clear that you voted unanimously to change that zoning. Why did all of you vote yes? Is there a certain reason, do you know? Because the information we had during the public hearing that was conducted, all of, everybody was against it, all the officers of the township. They'd sent a resolution themselves that they'd adopted, and the applicant never showed. And that's always a concern of mine, because it was an LLC, and so who knows who it was? And we were told by the planner at the time that we shouldn't be concerned about the use, and that's true. But I think I have a lot of concerns about what it's gonna be used for, because it's in a location which is really troubled with traffic already. Being representative of the school, that Colony Road goes right to the school, and it gets a lot of school traffic, and it's right on a hill is where they wanted to make these driveways. So, that's, it's just confusing to me, having been on the Board that long. And just, just, just very concerning.
Hate to interrupt, Doc, but your three minutes are up.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to add, and I'm sorry to have Brian not here, because I know who Donna was probably talking about at that meeting. And your assigned member to the planning board is not the best person to have on it, I would say. I know that he, as he communicated to me, that he called me a, or you, he told us you called us, a good old boy. I take that as a major insult, and I'm not pleased. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else wish to address the Board?
Hi, my name is David Smith. I live in Essex Township. A couple of points. In your packet, you have a letter from Teresa Owen calling on this Board to at least have an NDA attached to any money that was, that you suggest to give to LEAP. And five years ago, I didn't even know what an NDA was, but it turns out it's a non-disclosure agreement. And when I, I found out about it five years ago when I saw what was going on in Eagle Township, and what LEAP had designed for Eagle Township. Nobody actually in Eagle Township, except for a few who had signed the NDA, to my understanding, knew what was going on. But they were actually, they had plans to actually reroute M100 going north out of, out of Grand Ledge to Fowler and to the freeway. They had, there was no input from the people. They never would have approved something like that. That was absolutely crazy. For their project, sitting in the middle of M100, they wanted the people to no longer go straight north, but take a left or take a right, go sideways. Anyway, please don't approve any more money to LEAP unless they have promised that they will not perform any more NDAs with this county. From business to business, I can understand why somebody would sign an NDA if they were a person in a business, that somebody was coming to town, and they didn't want others to know, but not government. Because when somebody in government signs an NDA, they don't, they represent the people, but the people don't know anything about it. The people in Eagle didn't know any of this stuff was coming on. And what, what it eventually led to was the recall of the Eagle Township Supervisor. Shortly after that, two more members resigned. This is what an NDA does to a community. And one last thing, why, why this Board is, seems to ignore Clinton County Catalyst in their awarding of money, taxpayer money? Give these folks a chance. Why, quite frankly, another three-year contract? And I understand it's like 100 grand a year. Let's split up and split some of that money up. If you're determined to give away taxpayer money, give it to, give some to LEAP, or to Clinton County Catalyst, and let's see the results a year later. We, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anybody additional who would like to address the Board? Okay, moving on. Next up is the Clinton County Housing and Homeless Coalition.
Good morning. My name is John Thalen. I'm the Director of St. Vincent de Paul in St. John's. And with me today from the Clinton County Housing and Homeless Coalition is Cindy Thalen, as Director of Beacon of Hope Family Care Center in St. John's, and Missy Davis, who is the Community Collaborative Specialist with Community Mental Health. We're here today to hopefully raise awareness to the growing number of people experiencing homelessness and what it looks like in Clinton County. The 2025 homeless in Clinton County, and your report was included in your packets. The first page includes some quick facts about showing increases that agencies are seeing and those that are experiencing homelessness. As you read the report, you might have been thinking, how can this be? We don't have homeless here. We don't see tent encampments in communities, and rarely see a panhandler asking for donations. Homelessness looks different in Clinton County. Homelessness looks different in Clinton County. We have what is called couch homeless or doubled up. People living with a friend or relative who is kind enough to let them stay with them for a period of time. There may be an argument or disagreement away from being out on the street and living in their vehicle. I can share a few scenarios of people who have reached out to St. Vincent's for assistance. People may reach out because the Lansing shelters are full and they have no place to stay. The shelter may not be an option if they have an emotional support animal. Transportation may be a barrier getting to a shelter. People often choose to stay in their vehicle. They reach out for a gas card to run their vehicle for warmth in the winter and air conditioning in the summer. Because their car is their home, they reach out for help with auto repair expenses. Staying in their vehicle can create issues with police. So they move around to different spots during the night, do not get caught. They live in fear. They park in rest areas, parking rides, businesses that may allow them to park in their lots and even dumpster enclosures to hide. Some homeless are employed but can't find affordable housing. They may use a restroom at a fast food restaurant to freshen up and change clothes and then go into work. They may take a shower at the Flying J or schedule a time with Beacon of Hope Family Care Center in St. John's to take a shower and schedule to do their laundry. St. Vincent's has paid for storage unit, past due storage unit fees so that people can get in to get their warm clothes that were stored there when they were evicted. We've even had requests for a cooler and ice to keep their food cold. I could go on with examples, but I think you see that homelessness does something different here. And you might be thinking, what can we do about it? So in March, St. Vincent's decided, since we didn't have a shelter, we were going to rent two rooms at the St. John's Motel and at least house two households at a time. With, that program required weekly case management to review how they're doing for housing requests, how they're doing for, uh, finding a job, whatever the issues were that were preventing them from having a home. As you all know, in June, the motel burned. And in addition to the two households that we were housing there, they had six other households were renting rooms at the St. John's Motel because that's the only place they could find that was affordable because they gave them a good deal. Since that time, we haven't been able to find another hotel that we can, um, have a same economical arrangement with. So what can you do, what can you do as a board? Maybe it's encouraging law enforcement to allow people to stay parked in their vehicle if they're not doing anything unlawful. Maybe it's showing consideration to a developer who's looking to develop a property for low income, affordable housing. Maybe having a conversation with those with influence regarding HUD funding programs. HUD is considering significant cuts to the continuum of care funding, which provides funding for permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing and HUD coordinated entry programs in Clinton County. So to conclude on a positive note, our Clinton County Housing and Homeless Coalition is working with leaders of Hope House in Gracia County who have been operating a shelter, homeless shelter in St. Louis for six years. They are in the beginning stages of working with Chiwasi County, as Chiwasi County also does not have a shelter. So as we move forward, our homeless coalition is creating a subcommittee to work with collaboratively with Hope House leaders to see if we can bring a shelter to Clinton County. So hopefully we'll see that happening maybe in the next year or so. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to share and raise some awareness on homelessness in our county. Our community is here if anybody has questions with the numbers in the report. The first page in the report kind of highlights, in a general sense, the middle pages are all the agencies and the increases. And the last page has some organizations that are a part of homelessness and, and opportunities. Thank you.
Apologies if I missed this in the packet, but do you have some data on, you know, people always kind of wonder like, how did somebody get here? Like, do you have any data tracking for our homeless population? Like, what kind of event led to that person?
Well, what we found with our homeless program that St. Vincent started, that homelessness is more than just a place to lay your head. It could be employment, it could be daycare, it could be transportation, it could be mental health issues. There's lots of things that trigger it. Everybody that's homeless are not drug addicts. You know, as, as people, if they've looked at Alice Report, which we have copies of the Alice Reports, people that are just living on the edge, one paycheck away from calling St. Vincent's for help. We're seeing that more and more. Just a side note, I mean, St. Vincent de Paul, locally in St. John's, last year gave out $287,000 to help people with rent, utilities, car repairs, gas cards, the needs, and it's 40,000 higher than the year before. So the needs are great and homelessness is just going to just continue until we can have, you know, more affordable housing. People are living on SSI at 900 and some dollars a month. And your rent's 800, and that's a good deal for rent. How can you, how can you manage, so?
I have a question. How do you start the conversation for finding a place for a potential homeless shelter here in Clinton County? And is there anything that maybe any of us could do community conversation wise to sort of help?
Well, the sweet spot, as they call it in Gracia County, is a place that might be able to house 20 people. And that could be men, women, and, and families with separation of the two. We have a location that Hope House has looked at in St. John's within the city limits. Premature maybe to share information about that, but it is, has a, is a possibility, which will require some fundraising, will require some updates to that. But we're hopeful that that can happen. But having a collaboration with Hope House, because they know how to run a shelter, we're not talking about a city rescue mission shelter like St. Lansing. We're talking about a small scale shelter to just begin small and serve. And, and the goal would be to not shelter people forever. You know, it's, it's a month or two. And have case management with them to help them with employment, with housing, with some of the barriers that they're experiencing.
Thanks.
Thank you for the, um, community support and leadership that you're providing. It's nice to see. One of the things that you, I'd heard is that the parking area, rest stops and parking, overnight parking are going to be closed for people staying, who need to use that as a place to park their cars. I'm just wondering if that does turn out, what kind of impact would that have?
Well, I think it could, could be huge. And I think that's where if we can, I hope to, to have a conversation with Sheriff Dush and also St. John's Police and other police chiefs, because hopefully there would be some, some charitable actions on officers part of, if they're not doing anything unlawful, maybe, you know, allowing some of that to continue to happen unless it becomes a, a problem with trash and other, other barriers. But, um, absent of a shelter and Lansing shelters are full most of the time. Even, even if people want to get into the Lansing shelters, they're, especially the, the dead of winter, it's tough. So I, I've heard people say they just, they just move around. They feel like they're getting pressure or someone's watching or... There was, there was one on, on the Price Road, the rest are down 127. I drove through and it wasn't appealing that you could see cooler, a cooler outside the vehicle. There were, um, and that was two generations staying, three adults staying in that vehicle.
And thank you for bringing forward solutions to this problem.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I guess if I could just add on to what you asked about, when you're talking about, um, the role that you could play in what it would look like to bring the, um, shelter to the community. I think it's not only having the shelter here in the community and talking about what that looks like, but when John is talking about, we would have the shelter and we would have case management as a piece to that. And it's a short term, having a shelter here for, having somebody there for two months. There needs to be a place for them to go to that's affordable. So we're looking at needing affordable housing, which is something that we just don't have here in the county. So it needs to be somewhere to transition them to.
That makes a lot of sense.
Is affordable housing the, the major, uh, or the top reason that people are homeless, I guess, or?
There is a big piece to that. I think that you're all aware, I was here from the Building Stronger Community as council and talked to you about the poverty simulation that we had last month. One of the questions that we asked as a follow-up to that, when people did, um, complete that, what it was, one of the biggest things that they thought was a need here in the county was the number one thing they thought that we were lacking here in the county was affordable housing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any comments here? Next up was a resolution, 2025-22, proclaiming November as homeless awareness in Clinton County. I'll read it, but I'll get all tongue tied with the whereas's. So I'm not going to read it. But I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Oh, this was already approved?
Yeah, last month.
Okay, sorry. I'm going to present it then. I didn't know that it was already approved, or I didn't remember approving it. And if you want to tackle the whereas's, that's great, but... Thank you. Appreciate it for everything I've been working on and doing.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take that motion back. Next up, Mid-Michigan District Health Department, Liz.
Hi, good morning. So your packet would include the November newsletter. So the three things we focused on was that we have appointments available for those, uh, needing flu vaccine or COVID vaccine. Just as a reminder, importance of the flu vaccine right now is, uh, reduces the risk of getting very, very sick, especially those who are over 65, young, and those who have chronic conditions. And also, if you live with somebody who is considered high risk, consider receiving the flu vaccine. As we get into the holiday Thanksgiving, we also make sure that the community is aware that safe handling of food is always a good thing. Make sure if you're in charge of that turkey, that you know how to thaw, handle, cook and reheat. And especially, we recommend if you are sick, not to, uh, go to activities or, um, parties and to stay home if you're sick. And just common sense, hand washing is always a good thing. Also, that we are encouraged by, uh, recent movements with public health funding. We did receive more funding than we were expecting, since we were expecting to lose a lot of funding. So we, we're doing okay right now. It's been a bit of a tumultuous couple of months in public health. And we do appreciate the support of this board and the Board of Health who have encouraged us to keep the programs running, especially those programs that support the women and infant children. And, uh, you may have seen in the local media that Mid-Michigan was, uh, was, uh, given funding to purchase a minivan for our dental, dental program. So last month, I believe, it was a picture of our minivan that was purchased by a grant that we received through the Delta Dental Foundation. And this allows our registered dental hygienist to visit the schools to provide the kindergarten, kindergarten oral health program. So we're very encouraged. So give our registered dental hygienist a wave if you see our pearly white van in the community. That's all I have, if you have any questions.
I do.
Okay.
In all of your contacts with the federal government, are there any grants or funding mechanisms for homeless people?
We...
You don't have to answer it now, if you want to tell us later.
I can tell you later, but as a entity that is very small, we do not receive direct funding for homelessness from the federal government. It would typically come through the state of Michigan. But I would also defer you to, um, Cindy, who could probably answer that question better than the Health Department.
Thank you, Liz. Appreciate that.
I just want to thank Liz for what she does. She's all over the place, all over three counties, supporting a lot of different stuff. And you work really hard and you're good at it. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Liz. Next up, PA 116 Farmland Application Approval. Trying to get through the list to see how many there is here. Does anybody know without me going through? All from the same applicant, which is Anthony, and Noah, and Russ, and Patty. And the township's had no issues. Gombo for approval.
I'll make that motion for approval.
Okay.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next up, zoning.
Good morning, Board. Tanner White, Planning and Zoning. Here today to represent three cases the Planning Commission brought forth for approval from the month of November. First case I would like to go over is PC 1925 for a special land use permit for home occupation Class B. Application was submitted by Dan and Carrie Dickinson, who live on 3445 Harmon Road. The applicant is requesting a special land use approval for a facility for one-on-one personal training, rehab and chiropractic care. The property is 80 acres in total, consists of an existing house and an accessory structure that is under construction that will service the proposed business and accessory dwelling unit for this son as well. This property was recently a gravel pit and rezoned from MR to A3, zoning district. There are trees and open space throughout the land that kind of buffer from adjacent properties. There are no significant objections. However, we did have a stipulation to enhance, to enhance the crossing of the Moore County Drain, uh, from the Clinton County Drain Commissioner. That has been, uh, in works with Dan Dickinson and the Drain Commissioner. So with the special use criteria being met, staff presents, uh, the potential motion for approval.
Question, Mr. Chair. On a planning commission, was it a unanimous vote?
It was. 5-0 unanimous.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Any other discussion? This will be a roll call vote?
Commissioner Showers?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Yes.
Rudak?
Yes.
Herta Kent? DeLong?
Yes.
680 names, one accent, motion carries.
Okay, so the next case I'd like to present, PC 2025, is a special land use permit for home occupation Class B. Unanimous vote, 5-0, in favor. Applicant was Rachel Boots, located at 1094 West Maple Rapids Road. The applicant's requesting the special land use approval for a aesthetic services known as a laser tattoo removal service. The property is a little over three acres in total. It is wide compared to its depth, and it contains a house and two accessory structures. The house and garage are located on the eastern side of the property with the proposed business accessory structure being located in the middle. Because of the depth of the building, there was a variance request because the proposed business was going to be within 100 feet of an adjoining rear property line. It was set at 90 feet. That case went before the zoning Board of Appeals on the 18th of November and has been granted with the stipulation that they will retain at least a 10-foot barrier of trees on the back property line. So they always have that, that shield to the back property line. There were no comments, well, no objections from, uh, any government agencies. And with the special land use criteria being deemed met, staff presents the potential motion for approval.
Enter names of the motion.
Question?
Yes.
Did, um, our Health Department have to give approval? Were they one of the agencies that?
So we send it out to the Health Department for every case and no objections or anything.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Any questions? This will be a roll call vote?
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Rudak?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Showers?
Yes.
Herta Kent? Washington?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
680 names, one accent, motion carries.
All right, so the last case to present today would be PC 2125. Applicant is Eric and Susan Mizak. This is a rezoning map amendment located at 10349 South Francis Mizak. This is a rezoning map amendment located at ten three four nine South Francis Road in DeWitt. The zoning map amendment was requested to rezon three acres of a five-acre parcel from General Agricultural A2 zoning district to Rural Residential RR. The existing parcel includes the primary residence, an accessory dwelling unit, a shed, and a barn. The rezoning was initiated because the property owner would like to perform a lot line judgment, a lot line adjustment to the five acres to reduce it to three, and then put the other two with the farmland that is currently being used as farmland. The well and septic system will remain with the parcel serving the residence. A future land use map does designate the parcel and those around it as rural low density, so a request to rezon would be appropriate for this property. Pending any questions, we, staff recommends the motion of approval.
Any questions? Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? This will also be a roll call vote?
Commissioner Rudat?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Showers?
Yes.
Fickers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Herta Kent? DeLong?
Yes.
Six eight zero names, one accent, motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, Board. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Next up is approval of the Commissioners' expense accounts. I move we approve the Commissioners' expense accounts.
Support. Of course, you meant subject to the chair and the clerk reviewing. Make sure we're not nefarious in some way. That we're not robbing the taxpayers of any money.
Oh, it's you. It's been moved as supported.
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next up, the Leap contract. Were you able to get that paperwork done, sir? Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just note, sir, this is similar to what was discussed previously. However, at the October meeting, there was discussion about a revision. And I have to get to the specific section. The participation in the development of the county comprehensive plan, that was discussed previously as part of the other consideration that was discussed at the time. There is an addition. It's noted as an addition in, in blue, that item. I would also note that with respect to the comments that were made previously, there was no discussion at the board, at the committee meeting during, I was not giving any, in any direction, or there was not discussion regarding non-disclosure agreements. So there is no amendment related to that, not only because the Commissioners had not discussed that at that time, so...
I guess my issue on the non-disclosure, in my experience, it's typically not a LEAP ask. It's a state ask from the MEDC. And every, anybody that deals with this, they can refuse to sign an NDA. I mean, that's up to them, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair, I was, when I became chair for the second time, the previous chair had, had assigned an NDA, which he was not entitled to do by office. And the first thing I did was to end it. And for education for all of you, NDAs are not an issue for Clinton County. They're an issue for the township or the, that we represent. The Board of Trustees entered into the non-disclosure agreement with Leap, in Eagle, and not us. And I made it clear that we have no interest in involving ourselves with that, other than as an agent, agent of the township. We are not the final authority. We entered, we're into an agency agreement, which no one can find because it was sixty-three years ago that that would have been in place. And nobody at this table is that old except me. And I, it's always been that way. So we don't have a responsibility to be involved in NDAs. I corrected it because it was not our responsibility. Secondly, Leap, that was the only time in twenty-four years I remember ever being a question of an NDA. So it's not a frequent issue. In fact, it never happens. And Leap is not the one asking for the NDA, which is not correct. It is the MEDC that asks for the NDA, not, not anybody else. And it goes to the township first, not to us. They have to at least legally give their opinion on what they think of it. So I needed that correction. It wasn't Leap that did it. It was the MEDC that demanded it.
Well, good morning, Board. I don't believe we have any desire to sign any NDAs. Then don't tell us.
Exactly.
I mean, it's my thing, isn't it?
Yep.
You can't, just don't tell me.
Yeah, I'm gonna make another statement. NDAs are not evil. The reason for an NDA is to protect the landowners, potential buyers, from speculators coming behind and raising the price up. It's very rare that this happens, and that's the reason for an NDA. There's nothing secret about it. And in fact, I would feel like you do, David. I don't like the fact. I wouldn't know about it. So the whole chip plant arrangement was screwed up from day one. But we ended our involvement in it. I want that to be on the record. We didn't sign, the Board of Commissioners did not sign the NDA. Our chair did by mistake. And when I came back as chair, I ended it. Just so y'all know that.
Um, so I understand that we as a board won't be signing any NDAs, and I understand that Leap isn't directly asking for this. But within this last month, I had a local government that was approached with an NDA, and it was kind of the same similar story. And it made them feel very, very uncomfortable, and they didn't know what to do. And I don't know if there's a way for us to address this within this contract. But, but it made them, they didn't, it wasn't a good thing. And furthermore, I, I don't understand how you look at section, the scope of services, section two, and A and B say, lead all industry attraction and expansion efforts, lead all business retention efforts. And I, I feel like we're, if, if we have, we've had a contract in place for three years that states these things, yet the, the Eagle mega site is said, oh, well, that was a regional effort. It wasn't within your contract. So I guess I don't understand how, it's kind of convenient to say it was a regional effort, but if the contract says you're doing all these things, I don't understand how it wasn't a part of the contract.
Let me clarify that for you. This is, if we didn't have Leap, we'd have to hire somebody else for a hundred thousand dollars as a county employee to do the same thing Leap does right now. The arrangement for this, or excuse me, the, the, the process for this chip plant had nothing to do with what Leap does for us in terms of economic activity. I'd repeat for all of you, and I sent y'all an email that says that Leap got us over two hundred thousand dollars in grants for St. John's, DeWitt, and the city of Ovid, as well as grants for Maple Rapids, grants for Eagle Township for sixty thousand some dollars, as well as others. So that has nothing to do with this, with the chip plant. There were people who tried to tie them together, but they were never the same. That was an emotional response to something that no one was comfortable with, including yours truly. But this contract has to do with what Clinton County can do for the people when it's necessary. And they've been doing it successfully for the last fifteen years since I've been here. And no one else has brought me seven hundred and fifty million dollars in investment that goes to, that at some point will give us tax revenue for not more industries, but for more housing and opportunities for, for people who are, who, who live in Clinton County. That's part of our job. So there's no connection between the chip plant and this contract.
I guess, just kind of in the same vein as Commissioner Fickers, like, I've yet to see any data that points to specific, like, the numbers you're talking about there. Like, is that specifically from the contract, or is that just Leap activity in general?
That was back to, the seven fifty million dollars was the Glambia Milk Plan investment. And the three hundred jobs was a result of the Glambia coming to the St. John's Office Park. It's actually more than seven hundred and fifty million, but I put that out there just for you to think about. We do get quarterly, if I recall, the Leap's activities for, within the body's contract. And if, you know, if you want them to come and talk to, they can always do that. But they've been successful for a long time. And it's not the only one. They've also got a Sania Wave project down at the airport, which I told you all about, which was going to employ another seventy people who will be, be employed in higher-paying jobs. Same thing within Watertown Township, who has, their government board seems to have some, a problem with this. They have a plant that employs a hundred and fifty people who do welding parts for General Motors, employs another hundred and fifty jobs. But that has nothing to do with this contract. I think that was explained by the Leap people when they came here the last time.
I was, when I became chair, I met with Leap. This is, and I'll make it public knowledge. I don't care. I directly, there is out flaws in this contract. I directly, and John can vouch for me because he sat there, and I told Leap, if you approach a township that doesn't want this kind of a development, walk away. Find somewhere else. We, we're not going to go into that again. I'll try to push a township to do something that they don't want to do. They are fully understand, Bob, fully understood, because we're not going to have another Eagle township. It's not happening as long as I'm around. I, I mean, I, I was honest and blunt with them, only because I, I know anybody that was on the board at the time took a lot of grief. I did. Bob did.
So I guess, i-if we, let's say, two years on the road, the state wants to do a development in Clinton County that the local unit doesn't want, is there something in this contract that gives us the authority to say no?
We can't control the state.
So I, I just...
Yeah, you keep referring to Leap. It's not Leap generating the projects. It's the state of Michigan.
I get that, but I just, it's, I guess for me, like, it, it seems like there's a vagueness between what Leap's gonna do regardless of the contract and what's confided within this contract. And I guess I have a hard time understanding, if we're getting the milk for free, why are we buying the cow? Like, if they're gonna be, if they're gonna be doing stuff in our county regardless of what our contract says, I don't see why we would spend this money or tax dollars for it.
Can you?
Like, I guess, just, there's a, I feel like there's a vagueness between what is, what is their activity in our county specifically to this contract, and what's the activity beyond just the regional effort. And it seems like a lot of the big statistics that we're pointing to right now and talking about isn't with the contract. It's with the activity at large.
I just explained, they got you two hundred thousand dollars for people, townships and cities, as well as other, they work with St. John's, they work with DeWitt, they work with DeWitt Township, who never come to these meetings because they don't have problems that you're discussing. So they are out in the community, and once again, I'm gonna repeat this, if we didn't have this person, we can't be naive and assume we wouldn't have anybody directing economic development. We have to hire our own person.
Well, and...
So that's, I don't, what else you can say about that?
Maybe that's a bigger conversation, but like, I, I don't feel like we need somebody to be doing this type of work. Like, I just, I, I feel like we're the strongest county in the region economically, not because of this contract, but because we keep taxes low and we keep the burden of doing business here light.
With all due respect, you can vote no.
We're gonna have to agree to disagree on that one, because I, I do believe there's value. I experience the value daily in my business, not directly tied to Leap, but tied to Leap assisting my customers. I've been approached by several jurisdictions that want us to continue this contract because they benefited from it. And you're right, some rural jurisdictions don't benefit from it, because there's not the infrastructure to take large developments. So I, I mean, I, I fully support it. I have no problem with it. I don't know that we will ever experience another Eagle if I'm around. I would do everything to prevent that.
Question. Why can't we put that in this contract? Because they've never really verbally said, hey, we recognize that this wasn't wanted, even though that, you know, that was a regional effort. And, you know, you said you sat down with them. Can they put that in writing that they will not, that if there's a township that is vehemently opposed to something, that they would back away? I mean, that, I think that's what people really want. They want to see something in writing to, to protect them from this heartburn and the trust issues.
There's only been two, Eagle and Watertown. And since that time, the other, the other eleven, I've not heard that they have a problem. Clearly, villages have no problem because they all do their own planning and zoning, and they use Leap. And all the cities have no problem with it, so I, I'm not sure why that, why that would, I, I guess unless they're really stupid, why would you go to a township that doesn't want you? I mean, that's just plain logic. I'm not gonna go get beat up by somebody who doesn't want me around.
RWE is an example.
RWE is a problem for the state of Michigan, not me. And it's the townships. In fact, our, our, and I'm getting off on this.
You got a good sidetrack, Bob.
Sorry. Yep.
And I understand that there's board support for this, so I don't want to beat a dead horse. I, I do, I, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of language in this particular contract that isn't very clear. Like, for part three, C, the compensation and method of payment, C says county agrees that all application and processing fees for access to potential incentives offered by the county shall be completed by Leap, and that Leap will charge a reasonable application fee. I mean, what is that? I know that's like a small peanut of it, but what does that even mean? Is this a total, do we expect to have more costs outside of the hundred thousand dollars based on some of the language that's in this contract?
That, that refers to potential, applications through MEDC potentially for funding.
So like an administrative fee that they take off of whatever comes to the, the grant, is ordered with a grant?
That, that's what the language says, yes.
Okay.
Call for the vote, Mr. Chair. We can mouth this to death.
I don't have a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move that we approve the three-year contract as presented.
Is there support?
But I have a question.
We'll get to that. Okay. Now, discussion, question?
Along with what Commissioner Fickers was saying, I guess, understanding legal ease, it does say lead all industry, lead all, and I, it's just kind of hard for me to imagine that Leap's gonna take responsibility for all industry attraction and expansion efforts. Even if it wasn't for Clinton Catalyst, there's still other activity going on. I guess, in terms of legal ease, that, that seems to be problematic to me. Could you use some help understanding that?
It hasn't been problematic for three years. With the same language in this contract, with, with a few of the Reds out, so what are you gonna say? But don't, don't do that? I mean, it's, you know?
My interpretation of that is if there is a project, given the designation by the state as the Economic Development Agency, that those efforts in order to be tied to any potential application fee that would come up under the other section would need to be under the auspices, led by Leap.
So this would make it so that Clinton Catalyst can pursue economic development and business attractions?
We don't have a relationship with Catalyst at this moment in history. We ended it about ten years ago because they did nothing.
With, without access to potential MEDC funding, yes.
Without access to MEDC funding, yes.
Can I respond to that?
No. That's all but comment. You can talk to me later, but you're gonna have to convince me there is a reason for me to give you money. I don't see one yet.
One more question. Would approving this with the language of including all with, so what you're saying is that would prevent Clinton Catalyst if they wanted to work with that MEDC? That means anything that comes to Clinton County has to go through Leap? Is that what this means?
Clinton Catalyst is not recognized by MEDC. I've had this discussion several years ago. I even talked, I was asked to talk with MEDC, called me when I was chair, and I said nothing negative about Catalyst, and I said nothing positive about Leap. I said, we don't really have a interest in telling you anything. That's between you and the providers.
I have one more thing to say, Chair. Just keep in mind that Ingham County supports Leap... Just keep in mind that Ingham County supports LEAP through five main DDAs who fund it, because they are the ones that use it the most. And I know we have discussion about that here for other things. And so that, I mean, if that's something to pursue, maybe that would be of interest to, to spread everything out, some of the costs. And I do think that these types of organizations have different strengths and different relationships that they bring to the table. And I think that, you know, I respect the strong connection that the majority of this board has to LEAP. However, I feel like there are a lot of people in this community that could benefit from more of a niche, smaller operation that's more connected to our community, and I hope we can give Catalyst some consideration.
Okay. Just, I know, I don't want to be dead horse here, but I, I just want to be very, very clear that this, in my mind, isn't specifically an anti-LEAP thing. I just think that this in general is just beyond the scope of what county government needs to be. And I just, I'm not, I mean, we talked about the budget, we looked at projected deficits in the next couple of years. Like, this alone, off our table, would change that deficit to a profit. So to me, I just, I, I think it's beyond the scope. It's not a specific LEAP thing, I have no issue with our LEAP membership. This contract specifically, I just think it's beyond the scope. I'm not seeing a return on investment personally. Leave it at that. But I'm a no.
Okay, we're going to have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Washington?
Yes.
Fickers?
No.
showers?
Yes, yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Hurdickant, Rudat?
No.
Delong?
Yes.
And for the record, it only requires four votes to be approved, so.
Okay, next up, committee meeting report. Nicole is going to tell her from Mr. Hurdickant.
All right. For the Ways and Means Meeting, that was held last Thursday, November 19th. First up was the Medical Examiner Contact, Contract Renewal. The Medical Examiner Service Agreement with University of Michigan Sparrow will expire at the end of the year. The 2026 rate for providing full medical examiner services, including transportation, is proposed to be $175,967.21. I move we authorize a four-year contract renewal with Sparrow U of M for medical examiner services, subject to the completion of a legal review by county council.
Support.
Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Washington?
Yes.
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 Andrews?
Yes.
Hurdickant? Rudat?
Yes.
Delong?
Yes.
Next up is Sheriff's Request to Utilize Donated Funds for Equipment and Training. Clinton County Sheriff's Office received several donations from a community member, and these were earmarked for the dive team, equipment, and K-9. I move to recommend approve the use of $22,000, $22,080 in donation funds to support the seven rifles, including optics and lights, at $15,000. K-9 training for three handlers at $4,000. The dive team at $3,080 for purchases across all sheriff's office divisions.
Support.
Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Fickers?
Yes.
Hurdickant? Rudat?
Yes.
showers?
Yes.
and Delong?
Yes.
Next up is, was the Sheriff Police Services Contract with Victor Township. The Clinton County Sheriff's Office was approached by Victor Township to provide contracted police services within the township. The agreement is designed to enhance the level of law enforcement presence and protection for township residents, while also allowing for the enforcement of Victor Township's criminal ordinances. The contract provides eight hours of police services per week, totaling 416 hours annually. And services will include patrol, response for calls, traffic enforcement, and ordinance enforcement within Victor Township. I move to recommend approving the proposed contract with Victor Township, allowing the Sheriff's Office to strengthen public safety services within the townships, while ensuring full cost recovery for the county.
Just one question on this, since I wasn't here last week. If, if we end up in a situation where, like, a majority of our local units have a contract like this, does it kind of defeat the purpose of the contract? And then what do we do at that point?
Well, the sheriff has law enforcement authority within all of the townships. So he's, you know, obligated or obliged to respond in the absence of a contract. This contract is calling for specific dedicated tasks, although in addition to that, this references the township ordinances. Generally, the, the county sheriff cannot enforce local ordinances without a contract. They can enforce, enforce state law, obviously, but, so, and.
Don't blame them.
It's not always the case, I'll give an example, the charter township, like Duett Township, they have their own police force, so they generally enforce their own local ordinances. So.
So does the contract that they have with Fowler and Westfalia, do they have any, any kind of language about local ordinances, or is that just?
Yes, yes, those are, those are the examples. It's, it's a similar situation to that.
Okay.
Can I add too that they will pursue the, the cost of litigation on their own, not with us?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, so LEAP's support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
Next up was Waste Management. Kate Neese, the Waste Management Coordinator, provided an annual, annual report on residential recycling options and costs for Clinton County. I move to receive and place on file the annual recycling options report.
Support. Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
Number seven is the Equalization Apportionment Report. Equalization Director Harger presented the amended county apportionment report, following the passage of proposed ballot items for Victor Township being levered, levied in the winter levy. I move to approve the amended 2025 Equalization Apportionment Report as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
Number eight is Treatment Court Grants. The Circuit Court was notified by the State Court Administrative Office that its fiscal year 26 grant awards for the Journey Court and Veterans Courts were less than the application amounts. After reviewing the reductions to their budgets, the shortfall in funding will be supported by the opioid task force funds. I move to recommend increasing the Journey Court opioid grant agreement by 3,500, and the Veterans Treatment Court opioid grant agreement by 9,000.
Support.
Any discussion?
And we're going to get those reports?
Yes, ma'am. As requested by the committee, either a summary or the complete quarterly reports, to which, at this point, we've received one. But yes, we will begin presenting those or providing those to the Ways and Means Committee as requested.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with Commissioner Fickers that at least every six months or so, it'd be nice for them to come and tell us what they're doing.
Please and thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
Next up was a planning update. We got a planning update from Tanner. Oh, sorry about that. We took care of the first three items previously, and then last, there was a multiple driveway, a multiple residence drive agreement that was put forth to make sure that any future multiple residence driveways in the county are, are held to a standard with which emergency services and things can get in and get out. It's, it's just protecting the people that live there and making sure we can do what we are statutorily required to do. I move to approve the multiple residence driveway maintenance agreement language as
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
Next is the December 2025 Committee, Committee Meeting Calendar. I move to approve the December 2025 Open Meetings and Event Calendar.
Support.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
Fairgrounds Master Plan Project. The, we were notified that county administration and Facility Fleet Director recently met with representatives from OHM Advisors for a kickoff meeting. They have developed a structure for a steering committee, and that steering committee is suggested to be comprised of two board commissioners, Commissioner Delong and Commissioner Rudat, one member from the Fair Board, Cora Decker, one member from the Fair Board Livestock Committee, Zach Wagner, one member from MSU Extension, Carissa Harris, one from the Clinton County Farm Bureau, Kristy Kylan, one member from the St. John's FFA Chapter, Samantha Boujia, two members from county administration, John and Todd, and one member from Facility and Fleet Services, Rob Wooton. I want to note that the Conservation District is very interested in, in helping and partner with this. They use the grounds, they, they talk to the people, I really hope their, their feedback is embraced. Sounds like they don't feel like they need to be on the boards, so that's great, that's fine. I'm going to move to authorize the creation of a steering committee for the Fairgrounds Master Plan Project as presented.
I would just say, in, in response to your comment, the, the, and the Conservation District, we will ensure that they receive direct invitation to participate in the stakeholder, stakeholder meetings, and won't have to rely on public noticing or, or any of that nature. So, given, given their interest, so we will ensure that they are engaged directly as part of the upcoming stakeholder engagement process.
Thank you.
And just to note, on the scheduling of the Steering Committee kickoff meeting is being planned for sometime in January, February 2026. And the proposed timeline for completion is to have a draft available for review on August 1st during the 4H Fair, so we can get all the people that come to the fair to get, to make some, you know, feedback on the plan and make sure, I just hope we all make sure that, tell everybody when these meetings are, so they can all give feedback. I did make that motion.
Could we try to make sure that happens in January and not February if possible?
Yeah, well, we'll be working on it.
My hands are going to be a little tight in February.
I need your support on the creation of the Steering Committee.
Support.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's carried.
I've got to find my HR packet, hold on.
That includes Ways and Means. Not HR.
Now we're into HR. It's also held Thursday, November 19th. We talked about employee, employee life insurance benefit. The county currently provides an employer-paid $20,000 life and accidental death and dismemberment policy to all full-time employees after a 30-day waiting period, and this level of coverage has not been changed in over 20 years. In recent years, employees have experienced significant increases in the cost of living and the county's annual cost for the, sorry, making it increasingly important for the county to offer a benefit that supports the employees' financial security. The annual cost currently for the $20,000 benefit is $11,232, and increasing the coverage to $50,000 would increase the annual amount by $16,000. I move to authorize an increase to the county's employer-paid life insurance benefit from $20,000 to $50,000 effective January 1st, 2026.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hurdickant? Rudat?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Fickers?
Yes.
showers?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Delong?
Yes.
Next up is committee and commission appointments. We've got quite a few that were expiring at the end of the year, and we've got quite a few that were recommended for reappointment at the human, or at the, at the Human Resources meeting. Now, do we have to do these separately or all together? One at a time? Okay. First up is reappointing Dwayne Schneider as MMD, Mid-Michigan District Health Department's Representative on the Solid Waste Council for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2028.
Support.
Is there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Sorry. I was drinking coffee and I thought.
That's proved.
All right. Next up is reappointing Steve Wisswasser. I move to reappoint Steve Wisswasser to the Building Authority for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2028.
Support.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
I move we reappoint Patrick McFarland to the Clinton Area Transit System Board for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2028.
I'll support that.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried.
Next, I move to reappoint Kevin Douglas as the Fire Representative and Dave Decourt as the alternate Fire Representative on the Central Dispatch Administrative Policy Board for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2028.
Support.
Any other nominations? Are you done? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried.
I move for the reappointment of Lynn Weber as the EMS Representative on the Central Dispatch Administrative Policy Board for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2028.
Support.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
Next, I move to reappoint Dennis Straley as the Citizen Representative on the Central Dispatch Administrative Policy Board for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2028.
Support.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried.
Next, I make a motion to reappoint Timothy Hannah to the Community Mental Health Board for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2028.
Support.
Any other nominations? Are you done? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
Next, I make a motion to reappoint Gary Borson to the Parks and Greenspace Commission for a three-year term.
You missed Harger.
Oh, gosh, thanks. I make a motion to reappoint Eric Harger to the DPW Board, Department of Public Works, for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2028.
Support.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried.
Next, I move to reappoint Gary Borson to the Parks and Greenspace Commission for a three-year term expiring January 1st, 2029.
Support.
Is there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
Next, I make a motion to reappoint Pat Jackson to the Parks and Greenspace Commission for a three-year term expiring January 1st, 2029.
Support.
Any other nominations? Are you done? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Lastly, I move to appoint Dr. Petra Rahaman, MD, as the Deputy Medical Examiner for the remainder of a four-year term to expire on September 30th, 2026.
Support.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion's carried.
Got one more thing to comment with respect, respect to committee, commission, and appointments. I just want to thank everybody who has put in their application for the open seats in the Planning Commission. I believe we are going to close that date for receiving applications. We're looking at, putting an end date to receiving applications so that we can start to, to process all of this.
I would recommend that, based on our discussion yesterday, that you, and we will update the website to establish a deadline of December 5th. That will provide the possible consideration in December, if, if you are comfortable making a recommendation, or obviously after the first of the year, but, so. Without objection, I will take that as a consensus that I'll establish the deadline of December 5th.
Thank you.
Everybody good with that?
Got a lot of really good people.[1769.82]
All right.
All righty. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Andrews? Nothing?
No, I don't think so.
Mr. Fickers?
I, I, I think it would be really great if we were to develop a relationship with Catalyst. I don't know what that looks like, and I know that not, you know, not everybody is in favor of that, but I think there are things that they can potentially do that maybe it's not necessarily what LEAP does, and I feel that we should give them some sort of shot and that they've got a lot of support in the community, a lot of really strong business members that I would like to connect to some of my people. So I appreciate all the people that have come and let us know what they do.
Nothing today.
Troy County Officer and Aging had a wonderful fundraiser in Hawk Hollow in Clinton County that was enjoyed by many, and I hope to see some, a few, more of you there next year.
Thank you.
I won't beat a dead horse, but I guess I'll just, on the LEAP contract, I would just ask that supporters of that prove me wrong for the next couple of years, or strive to anyway.
$150 million is already a proof of wrong.
As I said, I won't beat a dead horse, but I would strive to get buy-in from everybody and not just a majority of the board. On the planning and zoning, it sounds like we're getting a lot of applicants, which is pretty rare for us to get multiple applicants on anything right now. So I guess I would just advocate that when that time comes that we try to have a deliberate, transparent process on deciding who makes the most sense for those positions. And that's all I have for today.
Again, beating the dead horse. Myself and Bob have experienced what Catalyst does. I am not gonna degrade what they do. It, I've had some really bad experiences. I don't, this is personal, this is me. This is me. I'm not including anybody. I, I don't... Value is there. Or to put any money back into Catalyst. We did in the past. At one point, we were a $50,000 donor. I was on that board for a long time, and slowly we dwindled down because of the actions that were occurring. From last donor, around $5,000, and then we decided not to give any money back.
I believe that's correct. I initially was thinking 10, but I'd have to verify.
10 or 5.
I'd have to verify. That was before I arrived.
And I'm just being honest, providing experience. It's not that we haven't given a shot. Given a shot. And with our current leadership. I wish I could say different. I have bad experiences with, again, back to my business, customers tied to information that's provided by Catalyst, but I'm not truthful. So I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman, I would, Mr. Campbell did verify the county's last, or most recent contribution was $10,00, or excuse me, was $5,000.
Was $5,000, thank you.
Anything else from...
No, sir.